I'll call this, this meeting of the Joint Permantown Building Committee and Board of Library Trustees, meeting to order. As a reminder to everyone, the meeting's being recorded. Anything that you say in the meeting or enter into the chat becomes part of the public record.
Motion detected at the back door.
So Buffy, do you want to get us started?
Sure. Okay, Dirks here, Flechner.
Here.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see any names now, so I'll have to just call you out. Roach? Is not here then?
Apparently not.
Okay. Uh, Secor?
Here.
Siegel?
Here.
Teal?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Hazelton?
I don't see them.
Okay. Karpinski?
Here.
Oh, good. I'm glad you can say your name because I can't see any of you. Uh, Patton?
No.
Not here? Okay, Roberts?
Here.
Wimberg?
Here.
Zegowitz?
Here.
Great. Berlinsky? Or Perkins?
Nope.
Not here. Neither one? Okay, Leadberg?
Here.
Rainville?
Here.
Lass?
Here.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Christine. Kristen. Goodwin?
Uh, you couldn't make it tonight, Buffy.
Okay. McCrory?
Here.
Luzitis is not here. Fevrier?
Here.
Enzalone is not here. Sal is not here. Tucker is not here. Wilkovich, Forty, not here. And Bono Bunker is not here. Here we go.
Buffy, Scott is here. Hazelton is on now.
Oh, okay. Thank you. But Patton is not, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Here we go.
All right, um, so the first order of business is to approve warrants and invoices and payments totaling $466,174.72 as consistent with what you see on your screen. Who wants to explain?
I'm happy to explain the, um, the three items. So item, item A is the, um, November invoice from Hutter Construction. The invoice value is $458,370.72. This had, um, not been included in our previous discussion as we talked about because the timing of the month end and the Thanksgiving holiday, we were getting this number, these numbers reviewed and approved through the process. And so this was, um, um, included in this warrant so that we had the correct official value. And this value has been approved and recommended for payment by both CHA and Finegold Alexander. With no questions on that, I'll explain the next item, which is item B on the list. B is an invoice from UTS, which is our independent testing agency. This value of this invoice is $6,504. The invoice, um, had to be revised as it had an error in it. Um, and so this invoice represents the reconciled costs based on, um, our onsite representative, Mark Luzitis, keeps tally of all of the visits and all of the tests that happen and, um, reconciled that. That's where this correction, um, for this invoice has been made. The invoice is slightly lower than the initial invoice.
Jennifer, can you just tell us what that invoice is for?
This invoice is for a mixture of different tests that were occurring onsite and they were primarily concrete testing, um, as well as masonry grout testing and, um, and then, um,
Okay.
Yeah, for this one, it's just, this is just concrete. Oh, sorry. No, there was a, some testing of the rebar as well. So this is the, um, uh, third party who tests to make sure that we're in compliance with, um, the strengths, the structural strengths of all those materials.
Okay.
And the last invoice, which is item number C on this list, is from Wakefield Arms. The value was $1,300. This is our monthly cost for off-site rental space for the, um, book storage off, off-site. And this invoice was not included in the previous meeting because they did not have the, they did not generate their invoice until, um, the first of the month. And so those are the three invoices that represent $466,174.72.
Do you have any questions about any of these invoices? Okay, if not, can we have a motion to approve the three invoices totaling $466,000?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, here's our voting. Dirks, aye. Flechner?
Aye.
Roach?
Not here.
Secor?
Here.
Siegel?
I'm sorry, aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay, Siegel? And?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Karpinski?
Aye.
Patton is not here. Roberts?
Aye.
Wimberg?
Aye.
Zegowitz?
Aye.
Uh, so now I think we're at 10-0-0.
Next item is, uh, the approval of, um, proposed change orders? Are these are actually executed change orders or proposed?
No, on item number A is something that we, um, are seeking a vote for. And, um, with, um, permission, I'd like to share my screen and take over, um, screen sharing. And, um, okay, so, um, the, um, request for a vote tonight is for proposed change order number 23. The value of this is, um, $22,227. We are seeking a vote because as per the rules of this committee, when a change order has a value over $15,000, this goes to our committee for, um, review, approval, and vote. This particular, um, condition is a masonry condition. And I, um, the, um, condition was discovered after demolition had occurred. There was existing masonry openings. However, they were, after the demolition was, um, performed, they were much larger than we had understood. And in particular, um, the masonry design did not allow for, um, the bearing. Um, I have two photographs I'm going to share with you. One is looking upwards at this condition, so we're really looking at this condition. And I'm gonna, um, uh, share. I think this image here might be a clearer condition. So you're standing up where sort of on a ladder right now, if you can imagine that. And what we're looking at is, in particular, is this condition. There have been some phrases that have been mentioned as, um, the word shark bite has been used. But in particular, this condition, we discovered that, um, the bearing condition of this wall, um, was left, um, in the 1986 construction. This was covered in the 1986 construction. And in particular, this area, um, the masonry is not bearing down directly upon the, for the loading, um, with a direct path. We have, um, while the demolition for this did happen, um, a while back. This is not demolition that just recently occurred in the month of November. The reason why this is coming to your group in the month of November is because the mason had not been on site. And so, um, while the RFI had been put together, um, and the structural engineer had, um, reviewed and responded to this, it was the mason's, um, entry on site. We, um, worked through this condition with them and they are the ones who prepared the change order for this cost. And the majority of this work is going to be performed by the mason. I'm gonna, um, flip back to, um, so, um, just getting back to the value of this, um, sorry, the, um, the value of this is the 22,200, um, 77,000, which, um, is, as it's listed as your item A. And, um, of that 22,000, the majority of that work is, as we mentioned, um, directly related to the masonry. I'm happy to answer any questions on the, um, on this. And Scott, um, if you want to speak first?
Well, I guess, yeah, just, um, so we, we had initially looked at it and did he find it deficient? And if so, is he going to, is he approving or she approving whatever the mason was recommending?
Yes, um, they, they did find the condition deficient. And so in, um, the, there was an RFI that was prepared. So that is the sort of starting point of this discussion. And the RFI has been responded to. I was looking for the, the response in this, um, the RFI has been responded to and the, um, the, we're going to be infilling this with, um, a masonry wall that, um, because this void is, um, the wall depth is pretty, um, significant. And we're going to be, um, addressing that, um, term that we keep using, shark bite. And, um, packing the void that happens against the existing masonry. So this solution has been vetted by the engineer. They have been on site and met with the mason as well.
Okay, thanks.
What, what elevation is that on?
You're approximately, um, at the third floor. So, so this is the demolition plans of this. And so, um, if you were in the library before we did the demolition and you were on this mezzanine level and you took that very short staircase up to, um, the offices or the Marriott Road Room, that is approximately, um, where this was. But it was sort of, uh, hidden away in this, um, in some of the construction. Jim?
Oh, I was just gonna ask for a little more clarification. So that shark bite is, uh, just about above your cursor there, is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's sort of in this, in this area right here.
Okay, and the, uh, sort of the remedy, it, it seemed like we're just, we're infilling a lot, correct? Are we, is there, is there supposed to be a, a hole or an opening remaining in that area after the work is done or the remedy is done?
So?
It was just straight packed?
This is going to be, it's, it's approximately this area when we're all done. So you're against the staff area, but most importantly, you're against an egress stair. And so the egress stair has, um, fire rating that we need to comply with. And, um, and that is, we need to make sure that we have a, a strong continuous, um, wall construction around the stair. So you won't see this condition when we're all done. It will still be hidden away. However, um, that jagged masonry condition, um, it was really important to correct the bearing, um, condition for the masonry.
So I just wanted to get it clear in my head. So, um, I would imagine that, that we're, we're going to take some chunks out of that shark bite and make it look like a magnified shark, shark bite and then infill the wall, is that correct? Just bring the wall straight down, then it'll be finished on either side with a gypsum or some other type of finish?
It will be finished on both sides, yep.
Okay, so the footing, there's no footing reconstruction or anything? This is just infill in the wall?
Yes.
Okay. And how, how tall is that?
It's probably about 15 feet, that, you know, 12, 15 feet. And there's some really sketch timber, um, beams up there with really poor connections bearing down just on a couple of very tall slender two-by-fours doubled up on the left-hand side of that.
In the opening, okay.
Yeah, it, it, it almost seems criminal to me that that was allowed in the eighties. And the folks on site mentioned to me that the opposite side of the building had so much more care taken. You know, it was more, more care was obvious, put into the building was obvious to them. And this opposite side was just so neglected. They even, you know, suggested that perhaps two different contractors did the work because it was so night and day between the opposite sides of the building.
So when, when I'm looking at that opening right now, it, that whole thing gets filled in, correct?
It, it does.
Okay. And I'm trying to wrap my, you know, trying to quantify in my head and qualify with, you know, uh, magnitude of difficulty in, in, in prepping that area, things like that. Then reconciling that with 21 grand. But that is, those are the questions I have for now. Thank you.
I have a question. So I, I was trying to find my sketching tools and I can't find them. But, um, it, it's just going to come straight down and bear on the granite? The, the gray granite protruding base? Is that what it's going to bear on? Or is there a beam through there? Is that orange a beam or?
I think that's just, um, a cut line for, um, where they, where they cut the concrete. But, um, I don't believe a beam is being, um, placed in this area.
And RSC is the structural engineer?
Correct.
Okay.
This is approximately, you know, the, the condition that we're, we're looking at here. It will be, you know, sort of in this, and, oh, that's going to highlight the wrong item. It's approximately in, in this area that we're looking at. Any other questions?
Oops. Question. I was just yakking away with my, as usual, with my microphone off. Is that, are there two columns in that wall? Am I saying, what am I seeing on that? What looks, what appears to be a column grid line, yeah, right there.
This, there is, um, I believe that, that may be a piece of steel, um, that is, um, there's another piece of steel over here and over here. So, um,
That's new.
I believe that's, that's, um, just outside of, you know, this, um, that's new steel. But the wall condition that we're talking about, it's sort of, um,
To the right of all of that.
It's, it's to the right of all of that.
Yeah, okay. Again, I'm trying to, you know, as straight masonry infill, it's going to be sheathed or skinned over or covered. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for some level of difficulty other than the, the cleanup of the shark's bite there, uh, for this. I mean, what are we gonna, we're going to be using just straight eight-inch masonry? Eight-inch CMU or something?
Um, I believe that, so this is an older set of drawings, but I believe that the condition after the investigation requires it almost to be a double width of masonry. So it is a double block wall. So I think there's some variation to this, um, detail in this condition here.
So there's actually two walls going in there?
Yeah.
No, that's, okay, got it. That helps. Thank you.
So will there be a design change to Finegold to redo that refrigerator area? And mechanical, is that mechanical shaft? Right where your hand is?
Right here. I, um, I'm, I don't have the most updated version of the bulletins open. But Jean, I can look into that. I, I believe that the, um, they're able to fit this in here. If you can give me one moment, I can open up, um,
I'm just wondering if we're going to see any, any other additional services for the design team?
No, I don't believe, um, we're expecting an additional service for, um, from the design team for this. This is, um, you know, they're, they have been, um, updating. No, that is the same, um, this, this bulletin hasn't, this is not the most updated, um, drawing. There's, um,
If you look at the description, it said the infill requires double width, I assume width instead of W Y T H. Eight-inch CMU, 16-inch in-depth to match existing?
Yep.
So I assume that is to make sure that it matches the current wall? Is that true?
Yes, this is 16-inch in-depth to match existing with vertical rebar. It's a double wide. And wide is, it's not width, it's wide is just the masonry term.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's a, a, a old British term relating to masonry.
Thank you, I appreciate the education.
Yeah. So there is, it should be matching the existing depth of that wall, which, um, you know, I think this relates to, if you're seeing this thicker wall here. But it's my understanding that there won't be an additional design cost or fee related to a redesign of the staff area. And, um, I can confirm, I believe they're able to manipulate the interior partitions to fit what they need in this area. And maintain all of the program that we have.
One last one from Zegowitz. Just, uh, curiosity, is, has there been a, uh, an estimate on time on what it's going to take these guys to do this? Associated with this?
Um, so there is, and, um, so it's, they have, um, two, two men at 40 hours to perform this work. And then there's a laborer who, um,
Yeah, so essentially a week to get this done. Wow.
It is a really challenging area of the building to be working in. And a part of that is that they are setting up, um, there's a cost in here for setting up staging. Because as you can see, this is, um, this is, um, lifted above the floor level.
Yeah, it's a large opening up high.
Yeah.
Couldn't they use a lift as opposed to a staging?
I think having multiple people working at the same time, they want staging, but, uh,
To date, the mason has been utilizing staging. So staging is their method that they use to install the, um, all the CMU at the elevator and at the staircases. And that is, um, their, um, preferred method. And there's a, also a tremendous amount of weight to, to the, um, block, um, masonry.
Yeah, and, and the floor is exceedingly uneven in there. It's broken up with lots of penetrations on the floor for the steel that's going in. At least it was, might still be.
Any other questions? Can we have a motion to approve, um, proposed change order 23? For the masonry wall infill with a value of 22,227 dollars?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, here's our voting. Dirks, aye. Flechner? Let's see, where did Mary Ann go?
She's still there, but her microphone is off. She's, looks like she's on twice, so she must be having problems.
I'll come back to her.
She's voting with a thumb up.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
All right, Roach is not here. Secor?
Aye.
Siegel?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Karpinski?
Aye.
Patton is not here. Roberts?
Aye.
Wimberg?
Aye.
Zegowitz?
That's a very reluctant aye.
And I apologize, the last vote and this vote are 11-0-0.
So item B, this is, uh,
Can I just ask one quick follow-up on that one? Is, have we identified, have all the walls been open? Have these possible situations have been identified at this point?
Um, I believe our, our demolition is complete. So we, trying to think of any other conditions that we may have something like this happening. I'm not thinking of any areas that we haven't addressed. As I mentioned, this, this area, this was not uncovered in November. It really took until, um, the, the reason for this coming to you was that we were waiting for the mason to be on site. The mason spent some time really looking at this condition and asking further questions of our engineer and preparing the cost for it. And, Peterson, please correct me if you know of something else, but I'm not aware of any other post-demolition conditions that, um, we haven't addressed yet.
No, I'm not aware of, uh, any similar conditions, Jennifer, on site.
Yeah, I think that three gotchas were not knowing exactly where some of the steel columns were, not noticing that there wasn't a foundation under the slab, under the, under the walls in the basement where the electrical is. And then this shark bite condition, I think those were the three main ones, right, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for interrupt.
Not an interruption at all.
So this, uh, item B is informational, no vote required?
Yes.
There is no, no vote.
Yeah, so maybe I can just say, now that you've voted under A, that will go to Kristen to sign and then I will post it against Hutter. What you're seeing under B, the change order summary to date, are the change orders that have been approved and executed. And those have now been, um, charged from the contingency line item to the Hutter line item. So if, if we have, uh, Jennifer's scroll, or I could take back the, either way. So, um, this is, um, the up-to-date summary, account summary as of this warrant. You can see in the extreme right-hand column, that's the total you just voted on. The contingency budget, um, you know, has, um, gone up. We've now spent 3.29% of it. And the taxpayer portion, um, continues. continues to reduce as we get additional fundraising and additional interest. So in, in the next meeting in January fifth, you will see the next executed change order will be posted against the Hutter line item. So I think really it's just looking at the next meeting dates. The first Monday in January is the fifth. And we may or may not be ready to go forward in front of the select board on January thirteenth with the FFE vote. But we're, we're working toward that deadline. And that's really all of the business unless you have questions about, you know, there's just been this change of three invoices since we met last Monday night.
A question from Tom?
Yeah, just another rookie question, FFE.
FFNE stands for Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. So, and in, in this instance, it's going to be primarily furniture.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Was that you, Chris, again?
Nancy and then Chris.
Yeah, okay. Boy, you two have been busy tonight. All right, so here's our voting. Dirks, aye. Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach is not here. Secor?
Aye.
Siegel?
Aye.
Seal?
Aye.
Cook? Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Harpinski?
Aye.
Padden is not here. Roberts?
Aye.
Wimberg?
Aye.
Zegowitz?
Aye.
So it passed with eleven zero zero at seven oh three.
Have a nice evening, everyone.
Everyone, good holiday.